Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council, scheduled for this Monday, June 4, 2018. It's after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be Monday, June 18, 2018. If you would, Mr. Paulo, please call the roll.
Mr. Ansel. Mr. Bastancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan. Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Ward.
Here.
We do have a quorum, and I'll note, Mr. Ansel notified us that last meeting that he would not be in attendance today. And I got something from Mr. Cavan, unfortunately, he had a death in the family, and that is why he's not here. Nevertheless, we do have a quorum. As I emailed council, everything that's scheduled for three readings would have to be on first reading only, because we do not have sufficient numbers to suspend the rules. However, we can pass those items that are budgeted. At this time, I would ask you to stand and join the members of the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the agenda will remain as presented. I assume everyone got the amended agenda, which added the one item which regards to public works, application for a public works grant that Mr. Malley had put together. Unfortunately, some of these things, you don't get notified to the last minute that money's available. If you want a grant, please send your application in, and you're lucky to get a week's notice a lot of times. I would ask that the minutes of May 21 council meeting be approved. So, anyone would like to make a motion to approve, I'd appreciate it.
So moved.
I saw Mr. Bastancic move to approve, second by Mr. Sanders. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The May 21, 2018 minutes are approved. Welcome, Mayor. Glad to see you on this lovely evening, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say this night.
Thank you, Mr. President Miten Dyke and members of council. Nice to see everyone this evening. Just a few things to report since our last council meeting. You have three things on your agenda tonight, pieces of legislation that do have timers in them, and I just want to draw your attention to those. The first one is a Clean Ohio grant that is due this Friday, June 8. And that is for $360,000 of grant dollars that we're trying to bring back to our community. It would be specifically earmarked or put towards the park that we're trying to construct out there on the land of the Siemens Corporation. So, that's the one with the closest timer. Then we have two others, both CDBG grants. One is a small cities grant, the one that we normally go through, go for every year. Its timer is June 15 for $150,000. And then the second one is an infrastructure grant that Jonathan Malley has been able to secure two of those for us, one that did the lights on North Street and also on Liberty Street. This would be the third one of these infrastructure grants, and they would be on South Street. So, and that's for $300,000. So, all said, over $800,000 of grant dollars we're trying to bring back into our city. So, if there's any way to be able to secure council approval between now and June 8, we would surely appreciate it. We do have to announce any special meeting of council, at least 24 hours in advance of such meeting. So, we'll have your indulgence if we can situate some special meetings due to, we need one more member to be here. And I think Mr. Ansel may be gone past some of those timers. So, maybe Mr. Cavan would be the one to see if, and I don't know what his situation is either. So, we'll have to be sensitive to that. But I'll let Mr. Miten Dyke discuss with the group after my report or sometime in the council.
All right, been done, Mayor.
Oh, it has?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Just continue, then. We've had Memorial Day, which was always a nice event for our community. The Veterans Affair organization puts that on each year, and we are surely thankful to them for that. This past weekend, we were really busy. We had Rock the Block. Jojo Megs, a community member, works for Howard Hanna. She really put the thing together. They did utilize some tools and equipment from the city to help make that go through. I know Tim Monet was involved in helping make that go together, and he tells me it was a very nice event. I was unfortunately at other events over the weekend and couldn't get there. We also had the bike rodeo that was done in conjunction with the police department and Kiwanis Club and Worcester Community Hospital. That was a real nice event. We celebrated the 45th anniversary of the Worcester Soccer Association. It's been in existence for 45 years. They're a huge help to us in putting on the soccer programs here in our community and are really a branch or an arm of our city's services. But it's a volunteer organization, like the Friends of Worcester Memorial Park, our volunteer organization. And then Kids' Day was held down at the library. Really, Main Street is the organization that puts that together, and that was a well-attended affair. We got to celebrate All American Kids. Teachers in the Wayne County area nominate kids to win a certificate, a monetary certificate, and give them a pin from our city to congratulate them on that. So, always a nice event. I got to celebrate an inaugural service of the Substance Church up at the old Leighton School. So, something that we had once owned and moved on, and now found a way to fit back into the community. So, about 100 members were there on that for their first service. Scout Day Camp, Cub Scout Day Camp started today up at Freelander Park. That's something that's put on every year with the scouts and always a nice event. And lastly, we did have quite a bit of flooding after, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, when the rains came down so strong and fast. Our PPM guys were called out over the weekend for at least four or five different spots where we had flooding, but they handled things pretty well for us, and I think things are back to normal. So, with that, I turn it back over to you there, Mr. Miten Dyke.
Okay. Petitions. We do have a liquor petition from, I think, Save-A-Lot. Would you mind reading it, please, Mr. Paulo?
Cleveland Market, Inc., doing business at Save-A-Lot at 1945 Cleveland Road, Worcester, Ohio, 44691. They're looking for a C1 and a C2 permit.
All right. As you may recall, having done a few of these already this year, we can request a hearing be held here, or in Columbus, or we can waive having a hearing. So, this requires a motion and then a roll call vote. Mr. Sylvester?
Motion to waive hearing.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Sylvester. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bastancic. Would you call the roll on the motion to waive hearing, please?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Ward.
Yes.
Okay. If you would be so kind, Ms. Paulo, send the Department of Liquor Control a notice that we waive the hearing. Appreciate it. And we have one person sign up, if he would. Stand up and state your name and address, please.
My name is Greg Gears. I live at 347 Park Street. I signed up this evening for Resolution 2018 dash 036, and that is the resolution providing for the annual tax budget for 2019. I'm inclined to express an opinion that I'm opposed to this budget if it's going to provide, like it has been, to the city employees a free meal that's not offered to the general public, and also not in the city collective bargaining contract. I think this budget then would have to be more closely scrutinized, maybe audited if this is going to continue. And also likewise, that we're having a shortage of housing for the public safety, welfare, and health of the public. There are some $80,000 that were given to the United Way. I wish that money goes to the poor. Maybe that needs to be audited, too.
Well, we have nothing to do with the United Way.
Yes, but I thought, you know, I wish that.
So, well, we're here for Worcester City issues, not the United Way. Okay. No committee reports, no public hearings, but one will be scheduled for the tax budget next council meeting.
Correct.
And old business was all taken care of last time, so we'll roll right into new business. It'll be presented by Ms. Ward. It is budgeted, so no suspension of the rules is required. And before we get to you, Ms. Ward, if Mr. Paulo would read the title, I would be grateful.
Resolution number 2018 dash 034. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchase of boilers at City Hall and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Ward, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Miten Dyke. We are asking for funding to, budgeted funding, to replace the two boilers that have deteriorated past the point of any repair. This is a request to authorize advertisement and to award contract to the lowest and best bidder, which is a process that, you know, the city does for a lot of these types of projects. It involves removal of the existing and replacement of the water expansion tank and associated piping, the intake air piping and muffler, two boilers and the associated piping and valves, stainless steel exhaust piping within the boiler room and up chase to roof, and an installation of a new four-inch concrete equipment pad. The project will replace the two boilers that Mr. Monet explained are approximately 17 years old, and we're estimating a cost of approximately $60,000. Again, this has been budgeted. The project could be postponed were it not passed right away, and, yeah, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Monet? He's here in the audience tonight.
Are you a boiler specialist, Mr. Monet, or did this just happen to fall in your lap?
No, we, I do the facilities management for City Hall. So does Scott Davis, our HBAC inspector, is heading up this project and has been working, keeping the boilers running for the last several years and maintenance on them. And they've been repaired a few times. They're leaking. You know, they could last a year or two, or they could fail at any time. They're getting to the very end of their useful life. We wanted to do the project before the weather gets cold. It's an ideal time not to do it, and we want to have enough time where we can solicit some good bids, competitive bids.
Yeah, I would think summer would be the ideal time to have boilers replaced as opposed to air conditioning.
You got it.
Mr. Sylvester?
Just one question. I know we have a pretty sophisticated system for air exchange. Is that, I'm going to make sure that the new boiler that we get is completely compatible with all that?
That's right. Yes. So, we had the original engineer do the specifications for this replacement. That did the original design back in 2001, 2000, 2001. Louis Hinkle here from Worcester.
Oh, wow.
So, we have the specs all produced and bid out when it's ready to go, as soon as it's authorized.
So, you're going to guarantee we'll be warm in the winter time?
I'll go out on a limb and guarantee that, yes.
All right. Go ahead.
Do we have an idea about how much more efficient these are going to be over the old boilers at this time?
So, they are high-efficient boilers, so they put them in a series called Lead-Lag. So, one boiler will operate at peak efficiency, and it's a little bit smaller than the current one, so it'll be a little more efficient. It's about 250,000 less BTU, so it actually fires at a more efficient temperature. And then the second boiler comes on as needed. It's called the lag boiler. Then, in the next month, it becomes a lead boiler, and the other boiler becomes a lag boiler, to try to even out the wear, so they'll last a little longer.
Did you have a question, Mr. Monet?
How much, so this is budgeted, how much of this is budgeted? Is it 60, or what happens if we don't get the grant?
There's no grant. This is budgeted funds. It's already been put in the capital improvement budget. We're just asking for authorization to bid the project and award the bid.
Okay. Thanks.
If there are no further questions, I would like to move this to...
You'd like a motion to...
Yeah, that's, okay, so we're good to do that. I know you said that, but we had a different conversation earlier, correct?
I'll defer to the mayor or to Mr. Gibbons. I have kind of the rules, but we'd like to do it as soon as possible.
Right.
It's budgeted, so we don't have to have three readings.
But if you want to take action within 30 days, you do have to have it done on emergency. Any legislation passed non-on emergency is 30 days to enact.
This does have an emergency clause in it, so we could go to bid.
Okay.
Yeah, there's two purposes for our emergency, is one, one to be able to go to bid, and the other reason is it's not, can't be held hostage by a referendum.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to...
I'd just draw our attention to Section 4. It does say three-fourths. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from immediately after it's passed and approved by the mayor, provided it receives the affirmative vote of at least three-fourths.
It's a typo.
Number of council.
Remember the, so, that's a typo.
Okay.
So, we're good to proceed?
Should I amend the...
Yeah, right.
It should say one-half, right?
It should be...
Majority.
By, you know, majority.
Majority. Okay, then I make a motion to approve the amended... resolution. Thank you. Is it a resolution? Yeah. Resolution 2018 dash 034.
Motion to approve the amended resolution by Ms. Ward. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to approve?
Ward? Yes. Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 2018 day 034 passes, and that brings us to Resolution number 2018 day 035. That also is a budgeted item, and it has the same problem in that it says three-fourths when it should just say...
Majority.
Majority. So, before I get to Mr. Silvestri, I would ask you, Mr. Paulo, to read the title.
Resolution number 2018 dash 035. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase items of specialized technology to wit, a Clara data collection units for the Finance Division utility billing and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sylvester, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thankfully, in these modern days, we're able to have an automatic data collection system for our meter reading. I guess it's an automatic meter reading system would be the proper term. And there's some hardware that goes with that, so that an actual person doesn't have to come into your house and read your meter, or in some cases, be outside in the bushes trying to read your meter. And we have a data collection units. We have 14 of those, and they operate on a Verizon cellular network currently. As of June 30 of this year, they will no longer activate any new devices, and as of 2019, they're no longer going to allow transmission on their network. So, because of that, we have to find a new network to use. The good news is, if we go directly to an Ethernet network, Ethernet connections, then we're going to be able to utilize Worcester's own point-to-point network, our own internal city network. One thing that Darryl Moser has been trying to do over the years is to try to locate these on city assets. We thought schools were pretty secure, but recent times have shown us that is not the case. As schools close, we have to move units that might be on the top of a school. And also, one of the places we prefer to have these data collection units is on the top of water towers. So, for example, the one on the Melrose Elementary School right now is going to be transferred to the tank that's just north of the Melrose-Miltown intersection on the east side of Melrose Drive. So, that data collection unit will be up on the top of there. That'll give us 100-plus more feet of altitude and better collection for the units. It's really not a precise process right now, because there are some line-of-sight issues with trying to get signals picked up from certain meters so that we can get accurate readings for generating city water bills. But, like I said, the good news is, this is actually going to lower the city's operating costs. It's actually going to be a little cheaper to go with the Ethernet units and to utilize the city's network. There's also some more sensitive receiver boards that we're going to be able to get as part of this whole package. So, I just want to applaud Darryl Moser for all the work that he's done. He's, I think it's been over a year, maybe two years, that we've been looking at this and preparing for this. And he is in the audience tonight. If anyone has any questions, or if I've missed anything, he's here to fill in any gaps.
Yeah, just a quick question. What was Verizon charging us for use of their cellular network?
I think it was around $12 a month because of data.
Oh, just $12 a month.
Right. Not online.
I see.
So, when did they notify us that we weren't going to be able to utilize their signal or their system?
We started hearing rumors around two years ago, and we only were officially notified probably in the last four to six months, if Verizon actually would give us the things we're going to have.
So, from their standpoint, rather fortuitously, they dumped us after the state gave them carte blanche to do whatever they want with their own micro towers. Hmm, interesting. Okay, thank you.
Good point, Mr. Sanders.
Well, we won't be needing them anymore for this.
We'll save the $12.
Who was it that's dumping us?
Verizon.
It's the technology. This would be our third set of modems if we went cellular again this time.
Did we use Verizon for our mobile services?
We do, yes.
Hmm. Might want to revisit that when our contract's up. Just a thought. Do you have a motion for us?
If there's no other questions, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018 dash 35.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ward. Please call the roll on the motion to adopt.
Ward?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018 day 035 passes. Brings us to Resolution number 2018 day 036. Mr. Sanders is going to present that. As Mr. Ansel, it must be on a week-long junket celebrating his 60th birthday, so, at least, that's the rumor. Anyways, before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, I will have Ms. Paulo, if she would, read the title.
Resolution number 2018 dash 036. A resolution providing for the annual tax budget for 2019.
Enjoy that one, because they don't get much shorter than that. So, and you'll remind us about the public hearings.
I shall.
All right. Floor is yours, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, as we've discussed briefly, this is the first reading of the annual tax budget. This is the, as the annual tax budget, we do this annually. This information then goes to the county, where the operation, the financial operation plans for the city for the next calendar year. It identifies how much money is expected from local, state, and federal sources, and the anticipated carryover fund balance, and how much is needed to carry out the city government functions for the next year. The County Budget Commission is, needs this information by July 20. Thus, the reason why we're starting this now with our first reading this evening. As you all saw with the packet that we received, there's eight pages of this Schedule A that has the breakdown of all the various funds, income, outgo, expenditures, and at this point, I would say that I would take the next two weeks, review this information, because we will be having a public hearing on June 18, and also then having the second reading on this that same day. And at that point, that would probably be a more appropriate time for any questions of any magnitude, in light of the fact that Mr. Doherty will be back for that meeting, as will Mr. Ansel.
Allegedly, they'll be back. I find it interesting that the finance director and the finance chair are both gone at the same time. Hmm.
So, sure. Yeah, so, sure. There's our conspiracy theories now. He left.
Yeah. So, we'll consider the Resolution 2018 day 036 as having its first reading.
Very good.
Now, bring us to Resolution number 2018 day 037. This will be presented by Mr. Sanders as well. If you would, please, Mr. Paulo, read the title. This is a little longer here, so take a deep breath.
Okay. Resolution number 2018 dash 037. A resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the State of Ohio Development Services Agency for a small cities community development block grant, to accept such monies if awarded, to execute any necessary documents in connection therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the mayor had mentioned earlier, this is one of the three items that we have a time constraint on. This application needs to be submitted to the state by June 15. And what we are looking at with this block grant, in terms of funding, it's total $150,000. As part of that $150,000, we will be providing assistance to Viola Startsman Pre Clinic. We will be funding for the establishment of a new parking lot at 402 East South Street, which is this piece here that Mr. Malley had handed out earlier. There will be additional funding for that parking lot, and then also, the city of Worcester will be administering its Fair Housing Program as in-kind activity. And that will be the primary four items of that $150,000. I guess if there's any more in-depth questions regarding any of the parts and pieces of this, I would, I guess I would ask Mr. Malley to, if there's anything further that we need to expound on, or whether we pretty well hit all the high points.
I think we've hit all the high points. This type of work that we're attempting to do is pretty similar to what we have done in the past with trying to help encourage parking in our newly expanded parking extension district and free up space so that we can encourage future development.
Thank you.
I have a question. Jonathan, will the structures that are currently within the boundary that you've indicated here, are those going to be demolished?
Yes, so, the property acquisition costs are estimated at about $50,000. Demolition of both structures that are within the boundary would take place at a cost of between $20,000 to $30,000. And then, the remainder of the funds would go toward regrading and construction of the lot with lighting utilities and landscaping.
Thank you.
Johnson, are we in competition with anybody else for this money, or is this grant more of an all-out?
more of an al, almost an automatic?
So, so this grant is almost more of an automatic, being the nature of an allocation. The state is receiving these funds through the federal government. And based on our population and our distress criteria, they say the City of Worcester, if it can present to us eligible projects, will receive a minimum of $150,000. And then the next group though, that will, the next grant that we'll talk about is very competitive. But both of them do require that we make a timely application and so we do have to make sure that we have all the pieces and parts in place for them. But provided that that's there for this particular grant, the likelihood is extremely high that they would fund.
I did have a second question. Just out of curiosity, when was, I mean, the application deadlines the 15th, but when did we actually receive this information in terms of knowing that we were going to have a July 15th deadline? I'm just curious.
That would have been in April, I believe.
Okay.
Mr. Bestanzak?
I'm sorry, I just got a, something that may be dotted T's, cross the T's and dot the sentence, but it says here, two public hearings or hearings are required. Is this considered a public hearing or is it just two public readings or do we have to actually have a formal hearing like we sometimes do during meetings?
So we held two public hearings. We held one back in May.
But you said the second one is today.
Oh, the second one we had at noon today. So, we held that here and we were, the first hearing is to make presentations to the public that these programs are available. And then the second one is to announce the specific projects that we're planning to propose for funding. And then we, a lot of communities do take the opportunity to make counsel that second hearing. We'll try to have a separate meeting in advance to see if we get any feedback.
I have nothing further, Mr. President.
All right, then we'll consider Resolution 2018 day zero thirty-seven. Or is it thirty-eight?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, yes. As having its first reading. You're on here so often, I couldn't keep track here, Mr. Sanders. That brings us to Resolution number 2018 dash zero thirty-eight, which will also be presented by Mr. Sanders. If you will, Ms. DePaulo, please read the title.
Resolution number 2018 oh three-eight. A resolution authorizing the mayor to submit a critical infrastructure application to the State of Ohio Development Services Agency for a small city's community development block grant, to accept such monies if awarded, to execute any necessary documents in connection therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, once again, I turn to you and give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is a block grant for $300,000, Small Cities Community Development Block Grant. Again, this also had two public hearings and, no it didn't. Yes, it did, yeah. Around the same date, it's May 8th and then today. What we're looking to do with this block grant, which is going to be roughly $300,000, and again, Mr. Malay was kind enough to hand out the second sheet that's talking about four traffic and pedestrian signaling systems that will be upgraded at four downtown intersections, constituting the South Street corridor, and then additional funding for the proposed South Street corridor signaling systems as well. As Mr. Malay mentioned previously, this is a little more of a competitive block grant. But again, if you don't ask, the answer is no. So at this point, we'll be submitted. And again, this is another one of these that's got a July, or excuse me, a June 15th deadline for application, so this and the next one will obviously be ones that we'll be discussing, trying to meet in advance so that we can get these things in. With that, I will open the floor for any questions.
You said that this is a more competitive grant. I'm curious what we'll do if we don't receive the grant.
It's my understanding, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but we typically budget approximately $150,000 to $300,000 per year for the replacement of signals. And so, should we not be funded, we will be replacing probably one to two of these intersections.
Okay.
What the grant allows us to do is to tackle a whole corridor at once, and so there are some cost savings, plus we're not disrupting the area with too much construction. It's better to get it through over the course of a year as opposed to a couple of years. So it's a program that we've used before with great success and effectively because of CDPG, we're a couple of years ahead of where we intended to be with replacing our signals. And I guess just a little bit more feedback, our Public Properties Maintenance Division did a survey that they continue to update the conditions of our signals throughout the city. And there are six that are listed as dangerous and they are all, as you can see here on the map, located either on South Street, which is the bulk of them, or Henry. And the one on Henry's are, there are a couple that are a little misleading, they're not as severe as the ones on South Street. But to answer your question, we would still be working on these projects because we have to, but it would be at a slower pace because of our limited resources and funds.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
The only question I have would be, some of the components of these systems that although there might be rust on a pole or what have you, I think, have we ever looked at a secondary use? Are we just scrapping all this out or are there other entities that could either use part or all of this maybe in another use that would serve their purpose just as well?
I'd have to confirm with our engineering on what our contractors will do with that. Typically, that's removed by the contractors that we hire. Most contractors, and I imagine is the case for this, but I can't confirm, they do find ways to reuse those materials. For us, I mean, the easiest thing for us to see is rust, which we could easily paint over. The big issue with the poles is the corrosion on the interior, which weakens its structural integrity, and then the degradation of the wiring within the poles and the equipment becomes obsolete. So, we happen to have push buttons on a lot of these signals that don't work. We have no pedestrian signals whatsoever, so when we use these grants, we can upgrade it to that full, full bit. But a lot of the wiring, at that point on the inside, the existing stuff has to be dismantled. A lot of it's going to be recycled to the point where it can be. And again, I can look up for more information on these specifics.
And then, I guess my last question, is there going to be a sound component as well as a visual for people, pedestrians crossing the street?
We do not have that planned for this. We, that is something we can look into.
I know the one up near the college is really helpful, you know, for vision impaired folks, but I hear it tweeting every now and then when I drive through there, so.
There's one on Market Street as well, I noticed that provides a visual there. I'll inquire with the engineering about the ability to, especially as we look at higher traffic intersections such as Beaver and also Market in particular. And we'll ask the engineer to look into that.
Great, thank you.
I have nothing further, Mr. President.
All right, we'll consider Resolution number 2018 day zero thirty-eight as having its first reading. Brings us to the final piece of legislation, Resolution number 2018 day zero thirty-nine. It will be presented by Mr. Myers. And like the last four items, it is slated for three readings. Ms. DePaulo, if you would, please.
Resolution number 2018 dash oh three-nine. A resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission Clean Ohio Program for the creation of Venture Park, to apply such funds if awarded and to execute any necessary documents in connection therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you very much. The, this is an opportunity to apply for a grant for approximately $360,000. This is the park out by the new tennis courts that we previously talked about accepting the donation of the land from, I think it's Aspen, Aspen Racquet Ball, yeah. We've provided beautiful maps outlining where this is, what we're trying to do with the trail and the access, providing handicap access and things. It's a little confusing in the way this might work as far as funding some of the access road. The goal here is to apply for the grant. If we were awarded the grant, we were able to use that money for some acquisition of some of this property and right of ways. One of the things I will point out is that, and on your map, there's a red border on the top side of the map that was originally an easement. It's been suggested and agreed that that will actually become part of the park parcel, so that'll become our property in addition to the land there and bottom part of the drawing where you see the parcel number ending in dot oh oh eight. So we will be getting that land as part of the park as opposed to an easement. Mostly, we just need to move this forward and try to get the application as quick as we can to apply for the grant. How we're going to do, utilize the funds and get the roadway put in things with the funds back and forth, we can explain, we're going to have to have another meeting on this anyway, so we can explain that in more detail if you'd like. Once we know whether we get the grant or not, we can kind of go into the details, so. This is just giving Jonathan the opportunity to apply for the grant.
Mr. Malay, this is the one with the June 8 deadline? Does that mean it has to be mailed by June 8?
We need to have this in the office of the Richland Regional Planning Commission on June 8th. If for some reason, we are not able to get a finalized resolution by that time, what we'll do is just inform them that one is forthcoming, and generally that is acceptable. It's, it's a benefit to be able to provide it. Unlike CDPG, it's not going to be absolutely essential. We can still make the application without formal approval as long as we can demonstrate the work. We're in the process and one's forthcoming.
So, we have a special meeting first of next week? Would that be early enough?
That would be perfectly fine for all the friends discussing.
Having pulled the, I almost said jury, wrong courtroom, pulled the council, I'm not sure I can arrange to get five or, five of us together for two days this week and there's no guarantees I can get six for Friday morning, which would give someone a chance to run it over to Richland. But if we could, like Monday or Tuesday, have a special meeting and that would take care of these other resolutions that have time-sensitive items.
Yeah, that would actually be perfectly fine if we, if we are able to wrap up for the 15th. That, that's essentially our main goal to.
Drop it, yeah. I've tried in between vacations, existing, other matters, people taking vacations and such. I haven't figured out that all those moving parks can coalesce, that we can either have two special meetings or one single meeting with six of us, so that eases my burden a little bit.
Okay, great, wonderful. Yeah, anytime for the 15th is amazing, and we'll make attempts next year to bring this forward sooner with a little bit more lead time, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Myers?
No, sir.
We'll consider Resolution number 2018 day zero thirty-nine as having its first reading. That brings us to miscellaneous. How many people would be available either Monday or Tuesday next week for a special meeting?
Tuesday would be better for me, but I could, I could make Monday.
I can do either day.
I can do either day.
You're going to be on vacation, aren't you?
You can do neither day. I can do either, either day. Are you thinking of an early morning meeting or?
Does anyone know when Ansel's coming back? I'm hoping, well, if he comes back, we're going to have six, because Mr. Cavan should be back. I can't believe he's going to be out two weeks in a row, so. You say, so do you prefer morning or afternoon or eve, early, early evening or late afternoon? I never know when the five o'clock should be in the afternoon or in the evening.
It depends on which day.
Well, the day, day you said's best for you.
Tuesdays, anytime Tuesday's okay for me.
Anytime Tuesday would work for me as well.
It'd have to be seven thirty or eight at the latest. I've got an eight thirty on Tuesday. I can do the evening.
Anytime, anytime Tuesday.
Would five or five thirty on Tuesday evening work?
Five, yep, yeah.
Five, five, good. I'd prefer five, go right out of the office down here and, and we'll just plan on doing those three resolutions for application of funds on that special meeting, so. So let's plan for five on the 12th.
That's not Thursday.
Well, you don't have to be here. I can, I can run a tape recorder. We could train Gibbons to run the tape recorder.
We tried that, remember?
Yeah. So unless you hear from Lynn or myself, otherwise, we will plan to meet on the 12th at five o'clock for a special meeting.
And cocktails after?
Yes, that's right. I hear Jen's a mean barkeep, so.
Oh, you do.
Just kidding, just kidding. So, we'll plan to have a special meeting with regard to those three resolutions, so. Well, we'll just start out with Mr. Bestanzak and work down and give Jen the last words.
Nothing further.
Mr. Sanders?
We will have the public hearing for the annual tax budget, June 18th. I'll say we'll start it at six thirty because I'm not sure that Andre can get through it by, from seven to seven thirty, so we'll just say that we'll do that at six thirty here in council chambers.
All right. So we're going to have a pre-meeting and then we'll have a public hearing, correct?
Eighteenth?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we'll have a.
We'll have a, we'll have a committee meeting prior to the council meeting.
Because the public hearing will be done during this.
Yeah, no, you're right, I'm sorry.
So that's why I was trying to clarify.
Yeah, no, no.
Remember, today I applied for Medicare, so I'm getting old here.
No, you're right. Yeah, we don't need to have, yeah, we'll just have the public hearing on the 18th.
And that will be as part of the.
That will be part of the city, as regular council.
Okay.
Yeah, so I apologize.
Must have been all that heat you suffered through when.
Yes, absolutely. Still, still, yeah, still heat stroke issues going on.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Myers?
Nothing further this evening, thank you.
Mr. Silvestri?
I want to thank Kurt Denning and Roger Kokelarsik, our Public Properties Maintenance Manager, and also our city engineer for the work that they're doing. I know we've had a lot of additional water this spring, understand that, but there are a few longstanding drainage issues I know they're looking into. There was one, I saw some emails on earlier, and I also, I've already visited that house. And then there was another issue, I sent another email about as well. So, I want to thank them for all their, both for what they've done and in advance for all the work that they will do, so. Thanks for what all, all of our city team and everything that you guys do, so, thanks.
And as promised, you have the last word there, Ms. Warden.
I have nothing further, so thank you all.
Okay, and I wish Mr. Ansel a good time wherever he is.
I do have one announcement I forgot to mention earlier on. I think council would enjoy at least hearing. There is a public meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM down at the Wayne County Administration Building, second floor, to discuss expansion of the jail in our city. I think it would behoove all of us to try to attend if we can, just because it's a major change in the jail here in the city that is being proposed, so. Six P. 6:00 PM tomorrow night at the Wayne County Administration Building, second floor.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right. See, Ms. Warden made a motion to adjourn, the second by Mr. Silvestri. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.